The meeting will come to order. Thank you all for being here this evening and Happy New Year to everyone. We have quite a crowd I'm so happy to see. If only all our meetings would be like this. Except through public comment. We could do. Anyway, just saying, just saying. Anyway, the first order of business is to call the roll. So with that, Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
President.
Thank you. This evening, we were honored to have the Hilltopper Quartet perform for us upstairs. I hope you enjoyed that. I believe they're here with us tonight and we'd like to ask them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would come forward towards the lectern and just lead us in that. Everyone, please stand. Over here, you can face this way. All right, when you're ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If the quartet would just please stay here, we'd like to express our appreciation for your performance this evening. So with that, we have certificates and a little bit of a gift card for each of you. So Julia Mahetta?
May.
Did I say that wrong?
May.
May.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Spear? Thank you, Julia. Iju Kang? Thank you. And Andrew Chuck. And Andrew Chuck. And last but certainly not least, our conductor, Navina Boyden. Thank you so much. You're welcome to stay, but if someone, anyone has homework, we certainly will see you. We're not going to hold you to that.
Thank you.
Can I go with them?
Yes. Okay. The next order will be to have our distinguished Reverend Dedison Harriel Jr. from Wallace Chapel Amy Zion Church come up and deliver our invocation.
Please bow your heads with me as we pray. Almighty God, we invoke your presence and power in this place tonight. You have called all of us to be your people and you have purposed all our lives. We thank you, God, for the precious gift of life and your myriad blessings. We thank you for the faithful service of retiring Mayor Nora Raddis and retiring council persons Marjorie Fox, Susan Hairston, Jamie Levine, and Phyllis Sink. We pray for them and the recently elected mayor Elizabeth Fagan and council members Jamel Boyer, Bob Palowski, and Kevin Smallwood. Dear God, we pray that you empower and enable the mayor, all council members, and city governmental officials and volunteers to work together for the common good of everyone. As a diverse community, help us, dear God, to realize that we are all of one blood and to accept and welcome diversity as a strength and a blessing. Phil Mayor Fagan, city council persons, and the residents of this city with a spirit of kindness, civility, compassion, justice, and love that will enable us to walk hand in hand with each other and be a beloved community. We acknowledge you, sovereign God, as the God of eternal possibilities, and in your hand is the life of every living thing and the breadth of every human being. We thank you, God, for your amazing grace, your faithfulness, your tender mercy, and your unconditional love. Creator God, we thank you for the various gifts that you have given to this governing body and to each of us. Guide, teach, and help us to use our gifts in ways that glorify you as we serve and work to be a blessing and help to others. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you, Reverend. Okay, I think what we've all been waiting for. It's time for our swearings in. The first will be our new mayor, Elizabeth Fagan. Elizabeth Fagan, will you please stand up with your husband and anyone else you wish, Kevin, and your family, if you wish? And you'll be sworn in by Assemblywoman Nancy Munoz.
Gather around. Come closer so we get to the mic. There we go. Okay. I state your name.
I, Elizabeth Fagan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor Fagan, I'd just like to present you with your certificate of election. You're formerly the mayor now for the next four years. Next will be our council members. First on board will be Kevin Smallwood. Would you please come forward, Kevin, and anyone else you wish to join you? And you'll be sworn in by our Assemblywoman, Nancy Munoz.
Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Kevin Smallwood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of councilmen at large.
Of councilmen at large.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And they bet that you would cry.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Kevin, before you take your seat, I will congratulate you. Here's your election certificate. And you can take your seat at the dais. Next on board will Bob Palowski and his wife Tremaine Stanley. And anyone else you wish, please come up to be sworn in as council member in the first ward. You'll be sworn in by Assemblywoman Michelle Matzakoudas. Please come forward.
I state your name.
I, Bob Palowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of council member of Ward One.
Of council number Ward One.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And Bob presenting you with your election certificate. Congratulations. Please take your place at the dais. Okay, and last but not least, we'll be swearing in Jamel Boyer in the second ward. Jamel, would you please come up with your wife Chantay and Mickens and anyone else you wish to join you? And you'll be sworn in by our Senator John Bramnick. Please take him forward.
I brought a small army with me.
If you raise your right hand, please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jamel Boyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to saints.
And allegiance to saints.
And to the governments.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of council member Ward Two.
Of council member of Ward Two.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Councilmember Boyer, congratulations. Your election certificate, please take your seat at the dais. Okay, thank you all. That was exciting. Our next order of business is to now elect our council president for 2024. Nominations are now in order. Councilmember Hamlet?
Yes, I would like to nominate my friend and colleague, Lisa Allen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those, any other nominations before we go forward? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Thank you. Okay, floor is yours, council president.
Thank you. Just need to turn on my computer here. The next order of business shall be to elect the council president pro temp for 2024, who will act as president of the council in my absence and as mayor in her absence. I would like to nominate my friend and colleague, Delia Hamlet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any other nominations? Hearing none?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Any opposed.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, Delia Hamlet. Thank you very much, thank you.
Did I put it upside down? Sorry.
That's bad luck.
Just checking if you're paying attention.
I'd like to congratulate councilwoman president pro temp, Hamlet. I'd also like to recognize deputy clerk, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Okay, take a breath.
I'd also like to recognize Clerk Lickatis for all that you've done. You are our rock, so I would really like a round of applause for her. You do a ton for us, so thank you. And I'd also like to recognize Deputy Clerk Cotiga for everything you've done. You have made sure to round the cats and make sure everything was packaged nicely, so thank you. I would also like to thank Reverend Harriel, as always, your words of faith always bring comfort, so thank you, Reverend Harriel. Thank you again to the Summit High School String Quartet. I would also like to recognize the dignitaries in the room. I would like to first recognize Congressman Tom Kane. Please raise your hand. Thank you for coming tonight. Senator Bramnick. Assemblywoman Munoz. Assemblywoman Michelle Matzakoudas. Superintendent of Schools, Scott Huff. Mayor Nora Raddis. Council President, Marjorie Fox. Previous Mayor, Jordan Glad. Previous council member, Al Dill. Former city clerk, David Hughes. We have Republican Chair, Nick Corial. Democratic Chair, Lacy Cotter. I would like anyone that I might have missed to please raise your hand so I don't miss you.
Any county commissioners?
Oh, Councilman Danny O'Sullivan. I didn't miss anyone else?
Phyllis?
Phyllis? Oh, well, I was going to say you haven't gone out yet. Okay. Previous Democrat Chair, Phyllis Sink, and current council member, Phyllis Sink. Thank you. Okay, I didn't miss anyone else? Okay. Great. Next, I would like to recognize our outgoing council president, Greg Vartan, who served in 2023 with a ceremonial gavel. Greg grew up, as many of you know, in Summit and has been involved with government and volunteering in his community since high school. His passion shines through as one of the youngest serving members elected in the history of Summit and is an inspiration for young leaders looking to make an impact. You can rely on his humor to bring levity to a meeting, which I'm kind of hoping for. He often reminds us that, sorry, my thing is, he often reminds us that while this job is serious, we shouldn't take ourselves too serious. You might notice Greg is always prepared, always has his three bullet points, and he can be relied on for knowing even the smallest of details regarding the work that we do on council. Thank you for your service, and I'm looking forward to working with you for another year. And I would like to present you with this ceremonial gavel. And here we go. So, good evening. My name is Lisa Allen, and I am deeply honored to address you tonight as your council president for 2024. I want to recognize my husband and kids. I don't know if they're in here, actually, I was looking for them. Can they raise their hand? Oh, my gosh. If I seemed a little distracted, that's why. Because I was like, my husband and children are not here. Thank you for your love and support. You are my rock and my source of inspiration and encouragement, so thank you for being here tonight and thank you for everything you do. I would like to thank all of you here in the room and watching TV tonight to be, being a part of this very important event. Whether you have ever been here before or you're experiencing this for a second time, this is one of the most important meetings that we could possibly attend in the city. Tonight's meeting is called the organization meeting because it's where we swear on newly elected officials and reorganize our council for the upcoming year. In a larger sense, this meeting is the hallmark of every new year, which represents new beginnings filled with excitement, optimism, and hope. We're continuing to build on the good works of prior Summit councils while embracing new ideas that inspire positive change. This meeting is also the opportunity to recognize our volunteers that live here, who generously give their time and talent and help keep Summit a wonderful place to live. It is an evening where everyone actually agrees on one thing, that Summit is the best place to live. Over the past three years, I've gotten to know many Summit residents from all walks of life, and it's my privilege to serve you in this new capacity. The outpouring of resident involvement in 2023 has been inspiring, and it has also remind me that engaged citizens really do make a meaningful difference. So thank yourselves, clap for yourselves. The difference between good communities and great ones, in which I would argue Summit is a great community, are those who can overcome ideological differences in order to accomplish significant and often hard work. Government can be difficult, but when we're willing to compromise, we build consensus. And when we build consensus, we build trust. Trust is the connective tissue that binds all of our relationships together and makes us the community that we are. Sitting in this chair today, I'm aware of the enormous responsibility it requires. I pledge to you not to be perfect, but I promise I will listen, I will be honest, and I will do the best to my ability to serve you. As we move forward together, there's important work to be done in pursuing our goals, but our priorities are straightforward: public safety, community engagement, and fiscal responsibility. First and foremost, safety is a matter that transcends politics and personal agendas. It's our duty and responsibility to keep our community safe. If we do not feel secure in our homes or in our neighborhoods, nothing else matters. We will work tirelessly with our Summit Police Department to ensure that they have the resources they need to help keep us safe. To me, safety is nonpartisan and it is non-negotiable. Full stop. Without a doubt, I believe that community engagement is the foundation of good governance. Council's role is to listen and take action on initiatives and do business that benefits our city. And we're going to be busy this year. We'll be assessing park renovations, playgrounds, fixing infrastructure, studying sustainable environmental solutions, identifying affordable housing opportunities, while staying hyper-focused on what resources we need to keep our residents safe. There will be many competing interests, and we all need to ensure that we do what it takes to get things right efficiently, effectively, and responsibly. We acknowledge our taxpayers work hard for their money, and we want to make sure that we deliver for you. Our aim is to govern based on the core principles of municipal government. As we embark on this journey together, whatever comes our way, I know that we're going to face this together as a team and as a community with common purpose. Eleanor Roosevelt once said, "The future belongs to those who believe in the beauty of their dreams." Let us all dream together of a summit where safety is assured, where citizens are actively engaged, and responsible stewardship of resources leads to a prosperous and harmonious community." Thank you. Next on the agenda, just give me one second. Is our farewell? Our farewell address for mayor. I'd like to call upon retired Mayor Nora Raddis to deliver her farewell speech.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome again to the 2024 Organization Meeting of the Summit Summit Council. First, my heartfelt congratulations to Mayor Elizabeth Fagan, council members Jamel Boyer, Bob Palowski, and Kevin Smallwood upon their elections to mayor and council. I want especially to welcome Mayor Fagan's family and the families of the existing and newly elected members. They will be dedicating, your mother, your father, they will be dedicating a great deal of time to our city, so make no mistake, your support is crucial to their success. I reiterate the welcome to the dignitaries that are here, and I'm delighted that you took the time to join us tonight. I have a small bit of advice to all of you on the dais, very short. In an era when world leaders struggle to speak a common language of comedy, collaboration, and cooperation, it feels to me as if the best and most useful way to encourage understanding is on a local level, where we have daily opportunities to advance our community and allow our better angels to shine. For the past seven years, I have delivered the State of the City address from this podium, but I'm not going to do so tonight. I've written it. I've written it, and it will be posted on the city's website, and I encourage you all to read it. I know that many of you are here to say goodbye to me, but most of you are here to welcome these guys, and you want to hear from them, so I will not be long. I am proud of the many accomplishments made during the year, and I am very grateful to our hard-working and dedicated staff and council members. I do, however, have a few thoughts and reflections of the last eight years. I must start by thanking the amazing city staff. Every single person comes to work with the attitude that doing a competent job is not enough, but rather, they believe it is imperative to do their best. It has been my honor and privilege and pleasure to work with you. The council members with whom I have worked over the years are dedicated to making our city the best it can be. Once in a while, we've disagreed as to what is best for the city, but I have never doubted their intentions. Every council member has been a dedicated volunteer, and I am grateful to all of them for their collegiality. Last but not least, my family. Rob? Rob Raddus, where are you? Thank you for your unwavering support every day for over eight years. You never complained when I was out many nights in a row and left you hot dogs and a can of beans on the countertop. You were always ready to attend an event if needed, and you always gave me your frank assessment of issues that I was facing. Jess, and Lauren, and Emma, thank you for listening to me talk about the thoughts and concerns of the city. Thank you for going on with your lives, starting new jobs in new homes. In other words, building your futures while still supporting me with laughter and guidance. And of course, my wonderful grandchildren. Grace and John, you make me laugh so often, and I have loved it when you've visited my office and when you've gone to ribbon-cuttings with me. I know you had fun with me, but I think you really loved visiting Amy and eating her pretzels. Thank you, and I love you both. I have not forgotten your baby sister. She's only two months old, and yet she's already brought great joy to our family. And to think that when I was starting this job eight years ago, you three were not born. Oh, my gosh. Many people have thanked me for serving as mayor, saying that the job must be exhausting, thankless, and maddening. I'm here to tell you that being your mayor has been a great honor and a pleasure, one I will never forget my entire life. Of course, there have been some frustrating and disappointing moments, but the vast majority of our residents and businesspeople are kind, honest, and cooperative with each other and the city. As is true everywhere, there's a small group in town that seem to be determined to be unhappy no matter what. But that's just the way life is. I believe we have to make decisions guided by what will do the greatest good for the greatest number. That said, as mayor, I strive to listen to every person who reached out to me with issues and concerns. When possible, with staff help, we were able to fix the problem, and when not possible, I tried to explain why. One thing I did not anticipate when elected was that I never knew what was going to happen on any given day. When I walked into this building on May 30, 2017, I immediately knew something was terribly wrong. Indeed, our beloved Detective Matt Tarantino was killed in a car crash that morning. We were shocked and shaken to the core. City Hall staff is like a family, and Matt was surely a star of that family. It was my job to be a source of strength and support. That was not what I had expected when I woke up, but I now know that the job is rarely predictable. From the beginning of my first term, a primary goal has been to be available and attentive to everyone who lives or works in Summit. I tried to take advantage of every opportunity to engage with our citizens. I will never forget the day that we learned that Governor Christie was stopping all municipal construction, including the Morris Avenue Bridge. For those of you who haven't lived in town for a while, that was a big deal. But until the legislature passed a gas tax. Understandably, residents were up in arms, and our communications chief jumped into action to hold a press conference to protest the shutdown. After several months, construction resumed. Residents were still angered by the delay, and it was quite difficult for passersby to see any progress. I remember setting my alarm for 2:00 AM so I could go to the bridge and video a Facebook Live of the crews connecting the main sewer line. I thought that would bring encouragement to the community. And of course, COVID presented unique challenges to effective communication. With the help and guidance of our communications team, I was able to utilize Facebook Live, videos, Zoom meetings, and even recording children's stories at Hometown TV, which the kids could watch at home during the lockdown. We got through the pandemic because of the hard work and diligence of City Hall department heads and staff, the calmness of council members, and the resilience of our residents, business owners, and community organizations. We are truly a blessed community, and we witnessed what we can do when we listen to the needs of each other and work together to address those needs. I am grateful for everyone in this community and for all of your support. Thank you for your support for the last eight years, and I'll see you around town.
Thank you, Nora. Thank you for your service. You've been giving to this community for over 30 years, and your legacy is long. So, we appreciate everything you've done. It's beyond being a mayor, so thank you. I can't believe those three kids weren't born when you started. Okay. I would like to now call upon Mayor Elizabeth Fagan for her inaugural speech. You know what, Nora? Elizabeth would like to give you something. Sorry. I should have kept you up here. I'll work out the kinks.
Wow, I have a couple of tough acts to follow, some really, really excellent speakers, so hopefully I'll do this role justice. Good evening. The spectacular town of Summit has been built on the work of thousands of volunteers. We must always acknowledge and thank them. The outgoing members of council have given their time and energy, and we thank you for leading the city. Mayor Nora Raddus has been the consummate volunteer. Thank you for your service to our community for decades, but especially the last eight years as our mayor. Retiring committee and board members and councilwomen, Marjorie Fox, Jamie Levine, Susan Hairston, and Phyllis Sank, thank you for your dedication to the city of Summit. We are all grateful for your service. As I stand before you this evening as the new mayor of our much-loved city of Summit, I am filled with a profound sense of responsibility and optimism. In my 23 years as a resident of Summit, local physician, and community volunteer, my focus has always been on serving people. And now, as your mayor, I am committed to extending that service to every aspect of our community life. Our city is an incredible place to live and work and raise a family. You may have heard the Together for Summit team say, "We believe we can make it even better." The Hilltop City can be the GOAT, the greatest of all time. Our priority is to ensure that every citizen feels connected to the services they need and has a voice in our government. This is not just an administrative responsibility. It is a steadfast commitment to each one of you. As we reflect on the November election, Summit's citizens soundly embraced our platform of improving public safety, providing transparency in government, and promoting responsible development. This council will deliver on those commitments by working with our administration and first responders to help our citizens feel safer, listening to all of our citizens' viewpoints, being transparent in our deliberations, and protecting the character of our wonderful town. We will always discuss our objectives openly and with civility. Health, both physical and mental, will be at the forefront of our agenda. A healthy community is a strong one. We plan to work closely with local nonprofits, community groups, and schools to create and implement programs that support our physical and mental well-being, starting with participation in the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, a statewide program focused on community wellness. Safe neighborhoods are the bedrock of a thriving town. We will collaborate with law enforcement, first responders, and community leaders to ensure that safety is a reality in every corner of Summit. An essential aspect of my tenure will be partnering with and supporting our dedicated staff, the individuals whose contributions are integral to our community's success. That is a shout-out, too, for Rosie and Nicole for tonight. They did a beautiful job preparing the reception, so thank you, ladies. Local businesses are the backbone of Summit's economy and community identity. We intend to foster an environment where new and existing businesses can flourish and contribute to the prosperity and vibrancy of our downtown and surrounding business districts and the well-being of our citizens. Since our public schools are our crown jewel, we look to elevate all of our schools to the status attained by Lincoln Hubbard this year, the number-one elementary school in the state. Our commitment is to be available, responsive, and actively engaged with all of you. We look forward to next year when we can look back on 2024 and report on all that we have accomplished together. As we embark on this journey, we urge each of you to join us in fostering a community where kindness and collaboration are not just ideals, but our way of life. If we examine Summit's history, we see multiple examples of the community speaking up for what they believe: the Broad Street parking garage, moving the train tracks underground, the location of City Hall, the Turf on Investors Bank Field, working with the county to create Glen Side Field, and most recently, the Broad Street West Project. We will continue conversations within and throughout the community so that we protect, preserve, and enhance the heritage of Summit with all of you over the coming years. Most importantly, we believe in the power of listening and coming together as a city. We do not always need to think the same way, but we do need to listen to each other. In our differences, we find strength and new perspectives. It is through understanding and respecting our differences that we can truly be successful. Together, we can build a summit that not only meets our community's needs for today, but becomes an even greater place to call home for generations to come. Thank you for your support and your hands.
Kevin, would you like a tissue? I think we have some on the dais.
At first, I thought you were talking about me.
I did, too.
It is an emotional night, and it's really wonderful that we're all sharing it together. Thank you, Mayor Fagan. I would now ask retiring councilmember Greg Vartan as 2023 Council President to please recognize retiring Mayor Nora Raddus for her service, as well as ask retiring councilmembers Marjorie Fox, Jamie Levine, and Phyllis Sank to please come forward. Although I don't think, is Jamie not in the room tonight?
No, Jamie's not here tonight.
Okay, okay. So, yes, Phyllis, Marjorie, and Nora, please come up. Where would you like them, Greg?
I don't know. Over here.
In your new chairs.
Good evening. If anybody needs a bathroom break, I'll only be like 90 minutes. First, I will add my congratulations to my new colleagues, Mayor Fagan and councilmembers Smallwood, Palowski, and Boyer. I will add my words of congratulations and thanks to the members of your family, who by sharing you with the community are also engaging in acts of service and sacrifice. Next, many thanks for the kind words and the gavel, Madam President. In a city of 22,000 people, few have the opportunity to represent our community on council, but even fewer become council president. As you are no doubt already learning, it is both an awesome responsibility and a tremendous honor. So, on behalf of the mayor and council, I now have the pleasure to recognize five women whose contributions to Summit have made an indelible impression upon this already wonderful city and have, beyond a shadow of a doubt, vastly improved it. Marjorie Fox was council president for three years and served on council for six. While she was a member of council, Marjorie was an advocate for education and helped lead the city's response to the pandemic. Marjorie also helped drive many initiatives to protect our environment, including the planting of more than 1,100 trees, supported the expansion of our recycling and composting efforts, and culminated in the adoption of the Community Energy Plan that will continue to ensure Summit does its part for years to come. Congratulations. Susan Hairston made history as the first woman of color to serve as a member of council, as President Pro Tem, and as Acting Council President in my absence. While Susan was Chair of the Health and Safety Committee, our police department successfully achieved prestigious accreditation from the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police. She promoted diversity, equity, and inclusion so that city staff more closely represents the demographics of the community. And in our day and age, when the loudest voices demand the most attention, Susan was a consistent advocate for those voices who are softer and those who cannot speak for themselves. To those who put their faith in Susan, she never disappointed. And she's not here this evening. Jamie Levine, in her time as Chair of the Capital Projects Committee, oversaw the most work on infrastructure and improvements to pedestrian and traffic safety in the history of our community. It was not that long ago that council simply wouldn't add new stop signs, wouldn't consider flashing beacons, and was not interested in sidewalks. These essential improvements that make our streets safer will continue to benefit this community for years to come. Jamie joined council at what some might call "the peak of the controversy surrounding Broad Street West." As a member of the community who shared the frustration, skepticism, and conviction about the need to alter course, Jamie was steadfast in pursuing the information required, questioning appropriately, and making her position clear. Her leadership and advocacy on behalf of the community was crucial in helping all of us to reach the decisions we made to vote unanimously to end the relationship with the developers, repeal the redevelopment plan, and remove the designation as an area in need of redevelopment. She's also not able to be with us this evening. Phyllis Sank's time on council was short, but for the last three months of this year, we needed someone to join us who was calm, whip-smart, and resolute. Phyllis understood the assignment, and she aced it. Her moral conviction and strong leadership was the driving force behind the recent adoption of the International Holocaust Remembrance Association's definition of antisemitism. Taking this step was critical because antisemitism was growing at an alarming rate even before the events of October 7th and the war in Gaza. Summit can now begin to address this problem by having a definition for it. Congratulations. Nora Raddus was the leader of our community when it faced its most serious threat. In spite of that, against the odds, and in contrast to many other communities, Summit is even better now. More people are alive and more businesses are open because of her leadership during the pandemic. People are safer because of her leadership of the police department. Our schools are higher-quality and more equitable because of her campaigning and fierce advocacy for full-day kindergarten. At the risk of becoming emotional, I'll close by saying this: In almost every measurable way, this community- this community has improved as a direct result of her leadership. We are beyond lucky to have benefited from her service as our mayor. I didn't say it, but they're getting the chairs. They're getting the chairs up here. Yes.
So, only three months on council, and Phyllis is telling us what to do.
And she's right. And she's right. Of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That was beautiful. You're done. Oh, yeah, come on up. Come join us. And I just want to say, give a shout-out to Marjorie, who was working up until the 11th hour today on issues. So, please, another round of applause of dedication. Okay, on to volunteer recognition. Nora, I hope you're at the end of the... Oh, no, you're gonna have to come back out. You should've said "on the end." Yeah, I would like Nora to come up to recognize our 2023 Volunteer of the Year, as well as the retiring volunteers who were appointed by the mayor. And actually, you'll be joining. You're gonna give away the bowls?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I gave away what it is. Forget you heard that.
So, we're gonna recognize the retiring volunteers.
This is Volunteer of the Year.
Of the Year, sorry.
So, a few years ago, maybe four or five years ago, we started... Because we all talk about how volunteers are so incredibly important in Summit, and we just thought it would make a very good idea to single out one person who had done a lot of volunteering throughout his or her time living in Summit. And our first Volunteer of the Year Award went to Tom O'Rourke. His wife Laura is here, and I'm very happy to see you, Laura. So, I'm happy to announce the Volunteer of the Year Award for 2024. I'm delighted to announce that this volunteer is presented to Sandra Bloom.
Okay.
Sandy has provided decades of service to Summit, both through city boards and service organizations. Sandy served on the Board of Education from 2002 through 2005, serving as President in 2004-2005 school year. Sandy was on the zoning board from 2005 to 2010 and on the library board from 2014 through tonight. Sandy also served on the Wilson School Task Force from May of 2004 through 2005. But service to the city of Summit was not enough for Sandy. She has been deeply involved in her faith congregation, Temple Sinai. Sandy served as Vice President from 1993 to 94, and then President from '94 to '96, which was a pivotal time for Temple Sinai. Sandy is currently the co-chair of the Cantor Search Committee and has assumed so many unheralded volunteer activities that it is difficult to identify all of them. She always steps up to do any job necessary. Her quiet, yet assured, manner instills confidence and admiration. She listens to diverse opinions and builds consensus. Lastly, Sandy served on the Board of the Summit Area Public Foundation, now known as the Summit Foundation, from 2014 to 2022. Is anybody tired yet? I mean, I'm exhausted. As Grants Committee co-chair from 2014 to 2018, Sandy led several initiatives to improve the lives of many of our residents. She brought key stakeholders together to discuss basic needs in Summit, including housing, hunger, health, and poverty. Sandy and the Summit Foundation helped make Summit a nexus for assistance true to the mission of improving our neighbors' lives. During the COVID pandemic, Sandy was a driving force on the foundation's Grants Committee to consider emergency grants to nonprofits. She encouraged the Grants Committee to act quickly, and they did, providing those grants in early March 2020. She was a vocal proponent of the foundation leading the effort to start Sustain Summit to support our small businesses. Over $700,000 in grants were awarded to local business owners and employees. In my conversations with Sandy's colleagues, common themes have emerged. Sandy personifies the scales of justice. She always objectively weighs evidence on its own merit. She begins her decision-making with considering what is best for this community or the group. She is prudent, but has an intense curiosity. Sandy never backs down from a difficult decision or from delivering difficult news. She stands firm and fair, even when it would've been easier to avoid a conflict. Sandy Bloom is an amazing volunteer, not to mention a wonderful wife, mother, and grandmother. Summit is a better place because of all the time, energy, and intellectual rigor you have shared with your Summit community. On behalf of your Summit friends and neighbors, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'd briefly like to read the certificate in recognition of your many contributions as a dedicated community leader and visionary. Your outstanding ability to communicate with a wide variety of people in a respectful and compassionate manner has greatly benefited our community. You understand the importance of honest listening as well as speaking. In appreciation of your generosity and countless hours of community involvement and for being a shining example of volunteerism in our community, presented to you this January 3, 2024, by Greg Vartan and me. Oh, thank you.
All right. Now, we'll do the recognition of retiring volunteers appointed by the mayor.
If you're here, please come forward to accept your gift. Donna Miller, who's retiring from the Board of Education. Okay. Kelly Mahalian, Environmental Commission. Christopher Sprague, Environmental Commission. Sandy, come back and get your bowl. And this is for your...
I hope you brought bags.
This is for Sandy's two terms on the Library Board of Trustees. Thank you. Bill Anderson, Planning Board. Bill has been on the Planning Board for a long time and has been a great steward, so thank you. Jay Brinkerhoff. There he is. Jay has also been on the Planning Board for 10 years. Donna, Donna Millery.
Yay!
Yes, you're here. Donna had the unenviable job of being head of the Board of Education during the pandemic. Ellen McNeil, who was on the Planning Board. I don't know if Ellen's here. Is she here? No, okay. Tom Arcella from PAL. Jamelle Boyer, I know you're here. Tyrell Dagner from PAL. Joe Bochamp, PAL. Thank you. Serge Mazua. Ryan Schaefer, PAL. Okay. Cheryl Barr from Summit Public Art. Brian Carpenter, Summit Public Art, co-chair. Ellen DeHavillan, co-chair, Summit Public Art. Vicki Liederman, Summit Public Art. Laney Seeger, Summit Public Art. Sarah Walco, Summit Public Art. She's the Visual Arts Center liaison. Laura Lameo, Community Programs Advisory Board. John Staunton, Board of Health. Thank you. Susan Bowen, the Broad Street West Redevelopment Advisory Committee. Jan Cho, Broad Street West Redevelopment Advisory Committee. Matt Kaplan, Broad Street West Redevelopment Advisory Committee. Kevin Magoey, Broad Street West Redevelopment. Michael Curran, Summit Economic Development Advisory Committee, Board. Paul Formicelli. Oh, no, you're here.
And Paul's here.
Yes. Julie Keenan, Summit Economic Development Advisory Board. Timothy McAlune, Summit Development Advisory Board. Joyce Yao. Dennis White, Housing Authority. Lisa Campbell. I know I saw Lisa. Lisa served on the Summit Parking Advisory Committee. Thank you, Lisa. Irene Esposito, Recycling Advisory Committee. Walter Gonzalez, Zoning Board. Dave Mullen, Zoning Board. And Broad Street West. Elizabeth... Liz Newell, Zoning Board. Diana Sager, Zoning Board. Steven Spurr, Zoning Board. Well, we appreciate it. We'll make sure we get these to everyone who's not able to be here. And I've sometimes thought in the past that, "You want me to come out to another meeting just to thank me?" So, I fully understand that sometimes people don't want to come out. But for everyone who's here and for those who are not able to be here, we truly appreciate all the time and energy you put into the committees, boards, and commissions. So, thank you very much. I have one thing that's not on script.
Go ahead.
It has been alluded to that one person particularly in this building makes everything run smoothly. And one of the phrases, questions, statements that I've heard the most in my eight years here has been, "Well, ask Rosemary, she'll know." I don't know. Does somebody know? Where's Rosemary? She's not here? She's not here today? So, I am beyond grateful to Rosemary Licatise because she is the oil that keeps this building running. And she has been through a lot lately. And this is something just for me. Someone, like, some lady came into my office about a year ago and said, "I have something that was given to me by the city when I retired because I was such a great volunteer." And she said, "So, I'm gonna give it to you because I'm moving to an old person's community, and I don't have space for all the stuff I have. But I cherished it, it was always on my desk. My grandchildren loved it. And I can't think of a better person to pass this on to than Rosemary."
He's the city. It's been my honor and pleasure to work with you, Nora, and with all the council members who are retiring. I love you all. You know I love you all.
Thank you, Nora. Thank you, Greg. And thank you to all the retiring volunteers. It's because of you the city is really... runs the way it does. So, on to the announcement of 2024 appointments. Because there are so many, in the interest of time, I'm only gonna read... Oh, the Council Standing Committee. Oh, I don't have the... Oh, I got it. Hold on. I got it. It's underneath my desk.
Do you have a memorized that?
Actually, I probably do. But I don't want to get it wrong. I'm just gonna announce the Council Standing Committee. So, this is the organization meeting. We end up with all our new committees. And so, we are going to have Councilman Vartan chair the Administrative Policies and Community Relations, along with Councilman Boyer. We're going to have Councilwoman Hamlet chair Capital Projects and Community Services along with Councilman Vartan. And we're going to have Councilman Smallwood chair the Community Programs and Parking Services. He will be on with Councilman Miniger. Councilman Miniger will continue to chair the Finance Committee along with Councilwoman Hamlet. Our resident lawyer, Councilman Bob Palowski, is going to chair Law &amp; Labor along with Councilman Smallwood. And Councilman Boyer will run Safety and Health along with Councilman Palowski. So, those will be our council committees for 2024. And so, I think we will get a lot done this year. So, congratulations, everyone. Our next will be the announcement of 2024 appointments. And in essence of time, I will only... We're just gonna let you know that there have been some tweaks to the list because we made some changes. But you can just go to the website. You can take a look. They're all there. But if anybody is a volunteer that is still in the room, please raise your hand whether you're retired or you're new. We just want to recognize you. Thank you for your service. Okay.
The final list will be up on the website tomorrow morning.
Okay. Final list will be up on the website tomorrow morning. Mayor, would you like to say anything?
Yes, the mayoral appointments will also be on the website and in the interest of time. So, you all can get home and go to bed. We'll leave them on the website. And there are a couple of tweaks as well for those compared to the original packet. Thanks for being here.
Okay. On to the consent agenda. We have several annual resolutions that we take all at once. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Actually, Madam President, can I pull out one, the first one?
Sure.
For us to vote on separately, perhaps? Because I'm gonna dissent on that.
So, you want... Yes, you can absolutely do it. So, we're just gonna do a consent agenda from two through 10 under Law &amp; Labor, one for Safety, and one for Community and Finance. Both vote on one separately.
Okay.
So, do the vote on...
Do the consent agenda, and then you'll go back to the council.
Two through the balance, okay. So, do I take a motion?
Yeah, motion on the consent agenda.
Motion on the cons... Oh, two through the end. All right. I'd like to make a motion on the consent agenda for the items two through the end. How many do we have? Let me just make sure I have that number. Two through 13.
No, it's two through 13.
Okay.
There are several committees. Just two through the end of the list.
Two through the end of the list. Do I have a motion? Anyone?
Motion?
Need a motion, too.
There's actually one. Sorry, three, Council President. There was one more I wanted to comment on as well.
Do you want to comment, or do you want to...
Dissent.
Okay. Well, you guys, I mean, you understand. You can vote no.
Yeah.
On a consent agenda. You say, "I'll vote yes," and it's all except number four.
Oh, sure. Okay.
You can do it that way if you want.
That works even better. Thank you.
Well, I want to talk about why I want to do it, too. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So, do I need a second for dissent? I need a motion.
You made the motion.
Yeah?
You're not going to pull anything out, correct? You're just going to vote separately on one. Is that correct, Councilman Miniger?
For the one that Councilmember Vartan has pulled out, yes, I'll vote separately on that one. The other one, I just want to make a comment on.
That's fine, you can do that. That's fine. You need a motion and a second to yet. So, Council President made the motion. I think Councilman Palowski seconded it.
Second.
And so, now you can.
So, are we dialoguing only on the ones that he's pulling out currently? We're talking about the consent agenda.
And Andy Miniger, right now, before you vote on it, because now you have a motion and a second, he can comment, make a comment on one of the consent agenda items. You want to make a comment on it?
Sure.
Thank you, through you, Council President.
Yep.
So, when it comes to zoning and planning, I want to, first of all, I want to thank everybody who is being appointed tonight, volunteers, everybody who submitted application. It's a really big deal. Thank you for coming through in a big way this year. There were so many applications. And for willing to put your time in to make the city better. When it comes to appointing people to zoning and planning boards, here is how it typically happens. There are full members and there are alternates. Alternates get some experience, the same experience, actually, as full members, but they only vote when somebody is absent. When there's a vacancy, alternates, with all the experience and institutional knowledge, they move up into the full member spot. And Council and Mayor appoints a new alternate. Here's what we're about to see happen tonight. This council has given special preference to more inexperienced people and have decided to skip over the alternates who have training and have multiple years of experience on these boards. Tonight, you're going to see them skip over that highly relevant, hands-on experience. Why? That's what I would like to know. In the case of the zoning board, these full members will be sworn in, get this, tomorrow. They'll be sworn in tomorrow. And then asked to vote immediately on things that could absolutely change the nature of neighborhoods. The outgoing chair of the zoning board sent an email, warning about this, in fact, and I quote, "The learning curve for new members can be particularly steep and time-limited to allow veteran members, in addition to other resources like our zoning officer, Board Secretary, Board Attorney, and others to build trust, share their own experiences, and ultimately equip the newly constituted board to begin this work." Veteran members. Veteran members that we are passing over. We're passing over veteran members, and I wanted to know what reason we're doing that. Was there a litmus test that made you decide to skip over genuine, professional, hands-on experience on both the zoning and planning boards? If there was some compelling reason, make us aware of that, please. I'm opposed to skipping over alternates, which is why I would be voting against that section of the consent agenda.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment. So, picking the, all of the committees this year was as challenging as it is every year. What I will say is we had more applicants, I think, Rosa, you might be able to say, than probably in the history of Summit, New Jersey. So, the days are not happening anymore where we don't have volunteers. So, we were flooded with volunteer packages this year. And I will tell you with full confidence that I have 100% confidence, Councilwoman Miniger, with the appointments that we selected. When we initially were looking at the planning and zoning boards, we have this wonderful lawyer here next to us, and he said, "Why are we, why do we have to move the alternates into the main positions if we don't want to?" And we were told, "Well, that's the way it's always been done," or "That's the way that we have to do." So, what I did after that was I said, "You know, I don't know much about the alternate positions at all, but let me reach out to Steve Warner, who is our attorney on retainer right now, that would be appropriate to ask those questions to." He responded, "Delia, it was my pleasure to discuss the land use board application process with you earlier today. I would be happy to further discuss the intricacies of the process and how it works, both generally and specific factually discreet instances with you or anyone else you choose. In the interim, in response to your example below, if the term of four full regular members expired, the Appointing Authority, the Mayor for the Planning Board, and the Common Council for the Zoning Board of Adjustment is not required to promote any, let alone all, of the four alternate members to those regular member offices, but may choose other residents to fill in any of those regular member offices. The filing materials are instructive and attached here too. Cox Book Sections 3-2 to 3-4, NJ SA 40-55D-23, D-23-1, and 50D-69." Don't quote me on the exact ones, but I'll post it later. The relevant portions of the City Summit Code concerning the composition of the Planning Boards, 35-2 dot 1 to 2.5, and the relevant portions of the City of Summit Code concerning the composition of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, 35-3 dot 1 to 3.6." I wasn't really prepared to answer this, but you're challenging me tonight, Andy. Also, for ease of reference, here's the link to the Summit Ecode page with the links to the applicable ordinance provisions. And again, I will post this, but what I will say is we did have actually a lot of people retire from the zoning and planning boards. To give you another example, Steve Spurr moved from zoning to planning, and we had a lot of qualified members. And we thought it was the best decision, so I stand behind our decision.
Through you, Council President, one quick thing. There's a difference between what is legally allowed and what's best for the city, but I think you answered my question. It's legal.
I feel confident with our selections. Thank you.
Can I add on to that? I think just because it's allowed to do, I think the point is, is it the right thing to do? Right? When tomorrow, the zoning board is going to meet on a full agenda of things. They're going to pick their professionals for the year. And I think that, you know, this is a situation where if we have people who are more experienced, especially when it comes to the zoning and planning board, when it's, when it's the character of neighborhoods that we're talking about, to me, I think we absolutely would want to favor the people who already have experience in that area. But, you know, so I'll join, I'm going to join with Councilman Miniger in dissenting on that one also. But I have another, I have another thing if we're moving on.
No, I would just like to say is, is, is this. That when there was an opportunity for a full membership that came open on the zoning board to both council members, you chose to appoint someone without any experience into that full membership position, overlooking the exact person that we're speaking about tonight. So, I'm just going to say that this is a celebration of the city. I recognize the frustration that you feel that perhaps this person should have been promoted from an alternate to a full membership. It was already a precedent set by you that to put someone in that position over her.
I don't think we're talking about a specific person. I think we're talking about the principle, right? Of the idea that people with experience should move up.
Well, it directs to a person because we are talking about a person, because it's a person in a position. So, my point being is, the position for membership existed at one time. You plucked someone from another board, bypassing that person who was alternate, and you put somebody from another board into a full membership over that person. And so, the precedent has already been set. The people that we have appointed to the zoning board are, many have lived in town for 30 years. People who give their time, understanding that we are going to disagree on this. But there are a lot of people that have gotten appointed tonight that are, do have experience. The person you are referring to did not get moved from the zoning board. She will still be there, and potentially in a year from now, she can move up or be reappointed. So, I would just like to say that the precedence had been set by actually leapfrogging her last year when you had the opportunity to go ahead and promote her and her experience.
Council President, if I may. You know, change is going to be difficult. And you voted for new people into office for change. And I, and I get it. There's some things that's going to be hard, and some things are going to be difficult, and some things people may not like. But we are going to change things. And on the campaign trail, I've said many of the times that I wanted to see new people in committee positions. And I will always be transparent in what I say to you as residents. I wanted new people and new ideas. So, I think change is good. And I just wanted to, to just make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
So, Council President, you'll do a vote on the consent agenda, and then the one item you guys can then take separately.
There's going to be one more, though, too.
Well, the consent agenda has been seconded and moved.
Right, yeah, but I'm just going to talk about something else, too.
Oh, okay. On the consent agenda.
Not number one, though.
Not number one.
Yeah, well, number one, yeah.
No, no, number one separate.
Oh, okay, we're doing that one separately.
You're doing a vote on consent agenda except for number one.
That sounds good.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I would like to take a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyer.
It's a roll call vote.
Yay.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Nay.
Are you saying nay to the whole consent agenda?
Well, there's.
Sorry, there's a piece of the consent agenda, excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Jacoby suggested that you can say.
Yay to the consent agenda.
Except for number two.
Number two, or whatever one you want. You don't have to say nay to the whole consent agenda.
Okay, so I can pick out something that I'm saying nay to?
Yes, exactly.
So, you're saying yay and nay to which item?
The, the appointments.
Number two for the, number.
Three.
Four for the record.
Four.
So, it's yay to all except for number four?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
I am aye with the exception of ID number 10565, which is nay.
And President Allen?
Aye.
Now, now you have the one remaining item that was on consent agenda which was removed, which is, item one, ID 10566, established 2024 council rules. So, you need a motion and a second, and then you can have a discussion on that.
Okay. Can I have a motion to discuss Resolution 10566?
Second.
Motion.
No, may I have a motion? Did anyone make a? Yeah, you're supposed to motion, not second.
Mr. Palowski, if you could make the motion.
I'd like a motion to pass consent agenda, ID number 10566.
And I need a second?
Second.
Now, you can have a discussion.
Okay. I'm going to open the floor to Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to point out and make public my objection to the council rules as written. Rule number 14 has been altered in a dramatic and potentially damaging fashion. The words, "No member shall be permitted to withhold their vote without permission from the Common Council," have been struck out, and the rule has also been edited to say, "A call for ayes, nays, and/or abstentions," that part has been added, "can be made by any member present." So, I object to the creation of an option for council members to abstain for many reasons, but I'll pick three to highlight this evening. Number one is allowing, the option to abstain formalizes, makes acceptable, and excuses unpreparedness. Under previous council rules, by needing to vote either yes or no, council members and city staff are held accountable. There can be no question, if a council member votes yes, then they are supportive of the measure. If they vote no, they object to it, or they lack adequate information to support it. Abstention creates ambiguity and questions around the thinking of that council member. Why a council member abstains is a question that potentially may be never answered. Number two is this brings to summit one of the more alarming and frustrating characteristics of the state legislature. Every year, members of the General Assembly and the Senate abstain or allowed to be, allowed to be absent from hundreds of votes. By being able to abstain, this allows legislators to avoid potentially controversial votes, effectively escaping the ire of party leadership and most certainly favoring politics over policy. This practice should definitely not be allowed in Summit. And third, from my point of view, abstention is really more like abdication of responsibility. We work hard to campaign, listen to voices of our neighbors, and convince them that we're the best person to represent their values and their priorities. If a member of this council can't do the most basic thing by forming a position and taking a vote, then that member of council doesn't deserve to be elected and should let somebody else do the job. So, again, for those reasons, I can't support the rules as written, and I will be voting against them. Thank you.
Through you, Council President?
Absolutely.
So, I agree with, Kyle's the president, excuse me, I agree with Councilmember Vartan. I would like to ask our city attorney something really quick.
Sure.
How would this affect quorum? So, what happens if you have three people who vote aye, two who vote nay, and then two who vote?
So, it depends on what the vote's for. The quorum is, if you, as long as you're present, you have a quorum. So, there are certain votes, certain bond ordinances, et cetera, that require super majorities, majority of the full membership of the council. So, I'd have to do it on a case-by-case basis. Abstentions are permitted in Robert's Rules of Order. It's not illegal, and just so everyone knows, an abstention, people get this wrong a lot. They think, oh, an abstention means a no. An abstention means no vote whatsoever. And I can give you an example. I just litigated a case on a school board for the appointment of a board member to fill a seat, and the fight was over, did they need to have a majority of the full membership, which would have been five votes? And we argued successfully that, no, you don't need it, you just needed four votes. There were two abstentions. Abstentions do not count as anything. They do not count as a vote. So, they are legally permitted. They are acknowledged in Robert's Rules of Order. But I think that will have to come up on a case-by-case basis. Generally, the big items are any type of bond ordinance. Like, so, for example, when you guys do the bond ordinances for the joint meeting, that requires a majority of the full membership of it. So, an abstention to no vote would, would not be no vote, but we might not have enough to pass a bond ordinance.
Thank you very much. And I move to amend this, by the way, to restore the section that says you cannot abstain.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So, wait a sec, you have, you just made a motion to amend and a second to say you cannot abstain. So, what we'll do is you'll have to vote on that issue first, then we'll go back to the main motion.
I'd like to call for the ayes and nays on that as well. Not the ayes and nays and abstains.
I would, I would like to give Clerk Licatise, you have a question?
May I ask my question before we take the vote?
Sure, yes.
Mr. Jacoby, if there's a, there's a worst-case scenario where the majority abstains, does the item die, or does it get carried to the next meeting for reconsideration?
You can carry it to the next meeting for reconsideration. We've, we've had, I've had that situation in other councils where there's just not enough members. It might be, you know, two people are absent, there's going to be an abstention, you're not going to get enough votes, so there'll be a motion to carry it to the next meeting. As you know, if it's a bond ordinance, it's published, et cetera, so that it might die, you might have to reintroduce it. But I'll give you guidance as that comes up. Generally speaking, if you have a quorum present and the vote requires just a majority voting, so let's hypothetically say you have seven members, five members, make it simple. Three people are there, three people show up, as long as two vote yes, it passes. So, I'll just give you the guidance as, as the items come up. Most of your items just require a simple majority vote. So, remember, an abstention doesn't count, but it doesn't defeat quorum because the person who could vote is there creating the quorum. They're two separate things. There's a quorum, and then there's a vote.
Council President, just a quick question. Although I would probably abstain on this whole thing, but. Would it make a difference if we added some language in there where you had to explain why you would abstain from a certain vote? I just wanted to throw that out there to the council members. Would it make any difference?
Well, I can say one thing. There are, you know, so when people recuse themselves, they're abstaining. And there are instances when you are legally required to abstain from a vote. So, to say you can't abstain is kind of incorrect because you guys have had situations, I can recall two different council people, because of their involvement in different organizations, et cetera, they actually recuse themselves. Their recusal stepping off the dais is an abstention. They're not voting. That is an abstention. So, you know, if you're abstaining because of there's a conflict, that's, that's totally legally appropriate. What you're suggesting is not inappropriate either, for somebody says I abstain because, because people, let me just give you another example. You might have a situation where you have new council people here. They might say, you know, you're voting on minutes, I wasn't here, I'm going to abstain on it. I have no idea if they're accurate or not. That would be a common way where people do abstain. But I can tell you, the one thing I can tell you is if you do, represent a lot of different public entities, if you have somebody who abstains a lot, guess what? The voters, the voters sense that. Because they elected you guys to do a job, and if you're somebody who's not willing to do your job, the voters get that very quickly.
I would like to give the floor to Councilwoman Hamlet because she's been waiting.
Yes, I just have two quick questions. Matt, so would you say we've been doing this all along?
You have been doing abstentions. You have been doing abstentions whenever people have recused themselves because of a conflict. That's absolutely true.
So my first question is, yes, we've been doing this all along?
Yes.
Yes. My second question, in your experience in this form of government, what percentage of municipalities are having abstentions?
I would say that most... Almost every municipality and board of ed that I represent follow Robert's Rules of Order. And whenever they defer, if there's ever any dispute as their council rules, you defer to Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order do permit abstentions.
Understand. So maybe we can put some language in about Robert's Rules because we really don't put that in our language right now.
Yeah, I mean...
It happened during the one vote where I tried to table something, and I think we got in this quandary during that.
Yeah, you can pass this and you can amend it again at your next meeting.
Right.
Where you guys could just simply reference, whenever there's, you know, an absence of guidance or a disagreement, the common council will defer to Robert's Rules of Order for guidance.
And then my third question is, when someone recuses themselves, do they only have to recuse themselves from the dais, or should they recuse themselves from that entire process?
Entire process.
Got it. So if we're in committee and we're talking about something that we would typically recuse ourselves from as a vote, we should typically...
You have to... There's a lot of court cases that say that being involved in a process and then just recusing yourself on the dais is not an effective recusal because you've already tainted the process by being involved.
That makes sense, good.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Councilman Palowski as having had a chance to speak.
So Councilman Vartan gave several reasons why he thinks a councilperson should not abstain. And like Mr. Jacoby just said, a councilperson would abstain at their own risk if they're not prepared or some other reason that you don't think is a good reason. But I think that's for each of us to decide for ourselves and not for us to vote, you know, that decision on everybody else. Most bodies like this allow for abstentions. Surely there are other reasons why someone might want to abstain. Mr. Jacoby gave a couple of examples as well. And in terms of whether we want to add in there that you need to give an explanation as to why you're abstaining or not, Law &amp; Labor is going to take a close look at the council rules after this meeting and possibly make some additional changes. And so we can talk about that again after. But for today, there's two changes in here. One is allowing for abstentions, and the second one is moving public comment to the beginning of meetings.
So just in two seconds, two seconds of follow-up. So the way that we had it written before, right, "no member shall be permitted to withhold their vote without permission from the common council," right? That's how we had in the council rules codified the process of recusal, right? Which is absolutely completely appropriate if there's a direct or indirect conflict of interest. But I think what we're doing tonight is we're intentionally making a change. I don't know the reason why. I don't like the change. And I, you know, to the point about, you know, letting council people decide, I mean, the whole concept of what we're doing here is we're deciding on the rules that are going to govern how we go about this year, and that's the reason why I'm objecting to it. So that's... I'll leave it at that.
Through you, Council President? So we have been doing this all along, but in the instances that are in the best interest of the city. So recusing yourself when there's a conflict of interest, or even the appearance of a conflict of interest, or when you weren't here and voting on the minutes but pretending like you weren't elected to represent the people, and you don't have to make hard decisions or do your job up here, that's not in the best interest of the city. So that's why I'm going to not vote for this.
I just want to weigh...
I will vote in the affirmative to revert back to what it was before, excuse me.
So in terms of the abstention, so let me just give an example. When we had spoken about the COC, I voted no against the COC. It would have been beneficial, and I spoke to both of you about this, it would have been beneficial to be able to abstain because I felt like we hadn't quite got to a place where we had enough information to vote on the COC. But what happened was you end up having to vote a hard no, and people don't understand that I wasn't against entirely the COC and helping, you know, and working with our nonprofits. But I had to vote no rather than yes, even though I felt like we didn't have enough information. So abstention does provide an opportunity for us to have a little bit of wiggle room. But I would say this, is that I recognize your concerns, and we have every intention of having Law &amp; Labor look at this. We're going to go back, make sure that if there's anything that we need to deliberate over, I am happy, and so is Councilman Palowski, to look at this, discuss it. We have to make some other changes, administrative changes to the rules, just to make sure that it's in first person. So over the next month, we'll take a look at it, and we're definitely going to work together as a council to ensure that we're all comfortable with these rules because that's really what it's about. Does anybody have any further comments?
I have one.
Just a quick administrative... Rosie, on page three of the council rules, letter B, should reference 7A, not 6A.
What's... What number?
Page two. Line seven.
Line seven.
So I can get with you after, Rosie, but it should... Letter B, it should say, "An individual council member receiving correspondence shall decide whether it should be treated as correspondence as set forth in 6A above." It should read 7A above.
Okay, so letter B should say 7A, correct?
That's just a scribbler's error. You can correct that.
And then the last thing I will say is that I'm certainly advocating for emailed public comments to be a part of the official packet, but I know that we're not all as comfortable right now with getting those in, but that's something that I would really like to advocate for. Mr. Jacoby has said that our city clerk would not have to read them, which I know she's happy about, but it would be my goal, Councilmember Palowski, to look into that over the next month, and I know that that's something that's really important to the public. A lot of the times I hear from residents that they simply can't come to a meeting, but they really do want... They really do want their information heard, and I will... I will hand you over that one, Mr. Palowski, so hopefully we get it done.
We will look into it.
So now you have the first motion to amend the motion, so there should be a roll call on that. Then following that, you go back to the primary motion and second, which is to vote on the council rules for 2024.
Okay. Okay, you guys are keeping me on my toes. All right, you're making me better.
Do you want me to just say it?
Yep, so I would say that we need to make a first motion to...
We had a motion and a second to amend.
So it's a vote on the amendment to remove abstentions.
Yep, vote on...
Vote... It's a vote to amend the council rules as written.
Council rules as written.
To remove... The ability to have abstentions.
The ability to have abstentions.
So do a roll call on that, please.
Madam Mayor, may we do a roll call?
Madam Clerk, yes.
Clerk, sorry.
Madam Mayor, too.
You guys are purposely doing this to me!
Reg! Oh, my God. Mr. Boyer?
So the vote is to remove the abstentions?
Yes.
Yes, just their amendment.
So we want to... So if you don't want to keep the...
Change.
Change.
To include abstentions.
If you want to keep the abstentions included, you vote no now.
No.
Ms. Hamlet?
Nay.
Mr. Miniger?
Nay.
No, you'd say yes.
No, you're yes.
I'm so sorry, everybody. Why don't you just abstain? Aye.
You guys are not doing very well, Robert, Rules of Order.
For the record, Mr. Miniger?
We're going to have to have a...
I'm agreeing to amend because I introduced it.
Mr. Palowski?
Nay.
Mr. Smallwood?
Nay.
Mr. Bartan?
Aye.
Ms. Allen?
Nay.
So the motion to amend fails. Now we go to the primary motion, which is the motion to vote on the 2024 council rules as presented in the agenda.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call.
Mr. Boyer?
Yay.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Nay.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Bartan?
Nay.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Council President, before we move on, just to clarify, Councilman Palowski, you're going to do a comprehensive review on the council rules, right? And then we're going to take another look at it as the year goes on, right? I mean, this is the first meeting of the year. You know, we just took office. I think there are some things that we want to look at, and I just want to clarify that you are going to do a comprehensive review on the rules moving forward, though.
Yes, that's correct. Of Law &amp; Labor Committee, well.
Okay. And I don't know if anybody caught it, but we moved public comment to the beginning of the meeting. So since we just voted on the rules, it's... Public comment is at the end for this meeting, but the next meeting, it'll start with public comment. So I would like to open it up to the floor for public comment at this time.
I can't help but sit here and it's like a trigger.
Sir, can you take your name in?
Al Dill, 16 Mantras. This is a quiz. Counsel, you're not involved. You're up there. You're the liquor authority for the City of Summit. You must vote on the renewal of a license, but every council member is a member of that organization. Do you abstain? How do you handle it? So at the next meeting, you should all come up with your answers. You're not involved. Nobody can talk to him. But it's a pleasure to see the new members. It's going to be a great year, I can tell already. Just changing the comments to the beginning will give a lot more vitality to the residents and an opportunity to come in and speak. So good luck, and I'll watch you on TV.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I would like to actually open it up really quickly to the council members because we didn't get a chance to say anything early on, but I just want to say this is how government works, so I actually like that this happened tonight. So anybody from council would like to say anything tonight as we... Before we adjourn?
If you don't mind, Council President?
Absolutely.
So my mother is here from Alabama, and I know this is a... This is kind of a unreal thing. Moving here from Newark in fourth, fifth grade, I'm sure that you didn't have the foresight to see your son sitting up here on council, but I'm sure that by middle school, it was probably a possibility. So thank you, Mom. You provided me with so much guidance, and all of the fire that I have in here is definitely from you, and I appreciate you and I love you. Now, the last thing that I would say to the residents of Summit, this is a town that has raised me. This is a town that I feel comfortable in. I feel comfortable with the environment, with the people. On this campaign, I've been welcomed into homes by all different types of people, all different religions, all different nationalities, all different ethnicities. It reminded me of a town that is just so special, where as a child, I went on trips. I was showing the world, and I was thinking to myself, if we did that as parents, the same thing that parents did with me when I was in middle school and high school, kind of took me in and showed me different things, came to my house and ate my food, right? Our folks' food, and I went to their house and ate their food. And as you get older, you sort of don't need any, you know, diversity training, right? It's a natural thing, you know? And diversity should be natural. But it depends on us taking each other in and embracing each other as a town. Now, I will say that Summit is definitely bipartisan because Susan Harrison is the first woman of color Democrat, and Jamelle Boyer is the first man of color Republican. It doesn't get any bipartisan than that, right? But to end this... To end this conversation, I think the people of Summit should be very proud of themselves. I think you have shown great courage. I think you have shown the flexibility of understanding different ways of thought, embracing different things, and, you know, I appreciate you. And I think the ideology that we hear on the news all the time is that, hey, one party is this and the other party is that, you know, that actually didn't play out in this town. And I truly appreciate that, and I thank you all, and I will do my best up here to represent every resident of Summit, to be transparent and not to always vote down partisan lines, but to vote what I feel is right. Because righteousness is justice, and you can't have justice without righteousness. So I thank you. Thank you, residents.
I said a lot tonight.
I'm not following that.
So maybe we could... Maybe I can make a motion that Jamelle goes last. Because I do want to say something, it won't be as good as that, but we did an interview before all the ceremonies and everything today, and one of the questions that Amy Caron's asked us was, "Why is serving on common council or mayor important to you?" And my answer was, "This is my hometown, and I love it. And I owe a debt to Summit that I'll never repay, but serving on this council is a way for me to try to help, give a little back." So I'm humbled to take this seat, honored to represent my town on this council, and I'm hopeful that we can take some measures this year that will make the everyday lives of all of you just a little bit better. So thank you.
Just one thing. I just want to say thank you to all the city staff for making today such a special day. Rosie, Nicole, Amy, Caron's, your entire department, Michael, your department, thank you for all the staff being here so late. There's so many days that they're here so very late, so thank you. And thank you to our outgoing council members. Phyllis, I really enjoyed working with you in Law &amp; Labor. We were like a tiger team in there. That was awesome. I mean, who would have thought? The one good thing that came out of this is Phyllis sank it, and she held everybody accountable, and it was really fun to watch, and it was just a true testimony that Democrats and Republicans can get along, and I, you know, you wowed me with your experience in there. And Marjorie, I was calling Marjorie even up until the last hour, so thank you to Jamie and Susan. These guys work tirelessly, so thank you. And Michael, thanks for sticking with this new crew here. We're honored that you are here. We might be moving your seat a little more in the center of the activity, but we're really excited to have you onboard, and we're really looking forward to starting 2024. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and I certainly hope, as Jamelle said, at least the Together for Summit team, we won't be voting together all the time, that's for sure, and if we were... If we do, then that would be a huge surprise, but I think a lot of us will have some really good discussions up here, and it should be exciting to watch. Thank you.
Councilman Miniger, any final words?
No, again, I'm sorry, I voted against my own introductory. Anyway, I'll do better next.
Madam Mayor?
I just want to say thank you all for being here. Really looking forward to serving this wonderful community, and I am remiss because I did not thank my family. So they've left now. I think I upset them so much.
That's why I was crying.
So thank you to my family and my friends, and my brother who came all the way from Villanova tonight with his wife.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Anybody? We got to get this.
Second.
Second. Anybody? Second?
Jamelle, second.
Jamelle, second.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Okay, okay. All right, adjourned. Oh, we got to vote. All in favor?
Aye.